To the class. To the group of like, your strengths, one nation under. In this.
Thank you. Got to be followed.
Oh my God.
Roland Taps.
Here.
Lee Brilliant.
Here.
And Callahan here. Ryan Holmes.
Here.
Matt Nixon.
Yep.
Matt is joining us by his own.
Thank you. Callahan.
Good evening, everyone. Many of our town committees took time off in August for much deserved break, but in fact at work. The town calendar on the website gets information on meeting dates. So far, we have had papers returned by the incumbents for the select board seat and the three school board seats that are up for election. An additional candidate has taken out papers for the pre-year MSAD seventy-five seat, but has not yet returned them. Any candidate papers are due by tomorrow at three P M. Absentee ballots may now be requested. The ballots will be mailed up in October to those who have requested them. Early voting begins on October seventh and will include in-person voting in this room. On September tenth, from nine A M. to two P M., LIPE is taking few assistance applications in the Donnelay Russell Meeting Room right here. No appointment is necessary. And finally, MSAD seventy-five is looking for community members to serve on a steering committee for developing this strategic plan and is asked for assistance publicizing it. For more information, please see the link on the front page of the Town and Tops website, and the superintendent can be emailed for interest on that link. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on. Four community reports and updates. Tonight, we have an update in the Community Center Committee. Steve Kessler, Allison Bull Carey, Dwyze, along with Architect Mark Lee Herr.
Thank you for having us tonight. We actually have our entire committee here this evening, minus Leslie Burns, who's been to join us. Thank you, Mark, for coming. Thank you for having us. You guys understand our committee, we've been around for a little while. This is our, our mission essentially, and I think Pam's gonna put that up on the board, but our mission of the Community Center Committee is to understand the desire, the needs of the topsome community and to identify accessible, affordable, sustainable recreational solutions that will serve the multi-generational community and foster social connection among topsome citizens. I think that's really important to understand and why we wrote it that way is that even though it says we're the Community Center Committee, it's really to explore all options. It's not just to explore an actual building, it's, it's to explore whether we have the facilities to sustain everything that we need within this town and the things that we aren't doing quite yet. So I think that's important to understand that it's not a full bias about we need to build type situation. I'm just gonna give it a, a little break for a moment until you get to slide two. Okay, I'm Steve Kessler, I'm the co-chair. Leslie, Lynn back there, she's also the co-chair, and Allison, Harry Glay over here is our secretary. Here's how the process sort of began. We researched and existed programs and facilities. There's a lot more on this, so I'm not gonna really get into detail on that. But we also instituted a public outreach with community engagement. And literally on the third slide, we'll talk a little bit more about that. With the help of the Rec Department, the committee put together a list of all facilities currently used or current programs. It's not including programs that we're not quite doing yet. We also, we as a group, everybody together, put together a, a list of all these things, and then Mark and his team came to town along with Pam. And on the next slide, it shows you exactly what they did. They walked all around town, looked at all of our facilities, and walked them through, looked them over, decided how much we're using them. Can, can they sustain everything that the town currently needs? With that, we brought the information back to Mark. He put everything together and, and they made sort of a charge for us, uh, committee. And it basically came back that we wanted to continue to pursue the need for some sort of a community center at that point. Awesome.
So then we switched over to doing the focus groups. Uh, that started in January of this year. We did six focus groups. Five with topsome residents. And the last one was interested community members and or businesses. We tried to keep the focus groups to the first ones to topsome residents. We also, uh, developed a moderator guide with the help of Harriman. And we, uh, tried to start each focus group with the same questions so that we had a similar flow to them. But we did allow the focus groups to go in whatever direction they went. And, uh, we allowed for the natural flow. As far as solicitation for the focus groups, we tried to utilize every available outlet we had, including websites, Facebooks, mailing lists, library mailing lists, notifications in the prior and that sort of stuff. So I'm gonna go through a little bit what the, what we got out of the community focus groups. We ended up with, as I said, with six different dates. Um, we arranged them from dates and times, mornings, afternoons, evening. Uh, one of them was online only, so people that didn't have the ability to come, uh, in person still had the ability to participate. Uh, we did also ask at the time for people that did respond and indicate that they wanted to be part of the focus groups. We asked them to provide some basic demographics. So this was just people answering the question as far as the age range that they fell in, whether or not they were resident or not resident. Um, and when we put together the individual focus groups, we tried very hard to make sure we had a selection of each of the demographics that people provided back to us, so that we had a really robust sampling of the community for each one of the focus groups that we did. We also asked them what their interests were before they joined the focus group, and this on the screen right now is the areas of interest that people kind of highlighted. Why they were interested in coming to a focus group was for, for these reasons. And each one of them provided a variety of information. There were lots of discussion points. There were lots of questions ranging from where and what and how much would it cost and that kinds of things. But the ultimate feel that came out of each one of the focus groups was that as a whole, every one of them walked away with people wanting to have some sort of community center in the town of Tops. Um, all the transcripts from each one of the focus groups is included in the Harriman report, so uh, we took those focus groups and, and ran them through a transcript subscriber kind of thing, and we were able to get that information. We use this information to start to create the townwide feasibility study. We took this information and what we said is we have all this information, we have all these comments and transcribed information from these focus groups, and we said, how do we quantify it? How do we say what is what residents want and how much are they willing to spend on it? And so that's how we use this information to create the basis for the feasibility study. Uh, the feasibility study, again, with assistance from Harriman, was available from the March eighth polls. We did have a booth set up there in person, and we allowed it to go all the way through the end of April. We allowed for, again, the online versions. We had paper versions available at the town hall, and we tried to use all the same outlets that we did the first time to try to get the word out there. And we ended up with nine hundred and fourteen responses to the survey.
Thank you. Uh, the townwide feasibility survey continues. We basically asked the major question, would you support a building in the town of Tops? Seventy percent said yes. That's six hundred and thirty people of the eight hundred and ninety-nine. Sixty-three said no. Um, and the people that said it depends, um, the next question would be question three, which would be in the appendix C, would basically said, why did you say that? And the answers would be in that report, uh, the Harriman report that was fifty-six pages long, I believe. Hopefully you guys were all able to read that last night. Uh, on the next slide, I'll let you look at for a second. Uh, it's really interesting and it's important to understand. Uh, basically, the question was, in an ideal world, would you like to see, what would you like to see in your community center? And I think it's important to understand the top things, obviously, were the indoor walking track with five hundred and forty-nine. Um, five hundred and forty wanted meeting rooms. Five hundred and twenty-one wanted multi-use rooms, but the, the pool is interesting because there's three hundred and sixty-five people that wanted large pool, or a recreational sized pool, and two hundred and thirty-six that wanted a competitive pool. And we, the only thing that we found within the report that wasn't perfect was that we couldn't figure out whether they voted twice or not, so that's the hard part. So that's, it's sort of, it could be that uh, five hundred and, six hundred, roughly six hundred people, six hundred and one, is that what it was?
Six hundred.
Um, voted yes on having a pool, but it's almost impossible to figure that. I bet there's, Brian's pretty smart.
We, we have, we wait, but.
But also, the kitchen was interesting to all of us, that five hundred and seventy people voted to have a kitchen of some size, essentially. So that was really interesting, uh, information that the town literally said, uh, directly backed up. The public outreach, community engagement, um, this is basically just a graph of what we just talked about, so it, it kind of puts it in order for you, so it's a little easier for you to read. We'll continue to the next one. Uh, this next slide was interesting because it had a hundred and seventeen, um, responses that essentially, um, they, they didn't really know what they wanted. Um, and most of them, what they decided was if they wanted a nice range and activity and then indoor courts, meeting spaces or fitness rooms, um, essentially, all the common responses were those that I just listed. And those exact a hundred and seventeen responses can also be found in the Harriman.
So then the next part of the survey was, okay, so you want all this stuff in a community center? How do you wanna pay for it? Um, and with some help, we came up with some rough approximations. Nothing about these numbers are exact. But what we said is if we took a typical house and we took typical taxes and we based it over a common twenty-year bond, how much would some of these things cost you if you were to choose all of these wonderful items that you chose for your community center? Because we will have to pay for the community center in some way, shape or form if we were to do it. And then we asked them, we took them right back to those same answers and said, after you selected all those and now that you know the cost associated with them, how many, you know, what would you change about your building? And you can see as you go to the next slide that again, it's a lot of the same responses, a lot of the same things that scored high in indoor walking track, a fitness center, meeting rooms, they all still scored high. Yes, numbers did change. Yes, people did fluctuate, but overall, we still had positive responses and people were interested. Knowing these approximate prices, they were still interested in having some form of community center and knowing the implication cost of those, generally speaking. Uh, the next page is a graph of those same results. Nothing really specific to follow. A lot of the same subjects were a lot of the same answers were the same, they just might have adjusted a little bit. And so that leaves us to the last question on the survey.
Yeah, which is simply said, if we get to the point of raising funds, would you be interested to help with that? We had seven hundred and three responses for those questions. Um, fourteen percent of them said yes, which is ninety-eight people of all the responses. And what's even more amazing to us is that they provided their email addresses as well for us to contact them. So that's potentially, if we get to that point, you might have a hundred people on a fundraising board. So that's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Uh, especially.
We didn't ask for the email addresses until they said yes, they'd be interested in helping after the fact.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so essentially, what we found, um.
We moved the slides. So quotes, we also included some quotes, um, from the actual survey, and thank you. Uh, we tried to put in a variety of quotes because we understand that not everybody is in support of it. Um, so we pulled out some of the quotes that we felt were the most applicable to the work that we were doing. Um, a needed resource for the community, invited vital to enhancing the services available. And it depends on the actual use as well as the continual cost of staffing and maintaining the building. So I think that that's all something that we know and we understand. Um, but these were actual quotes from the survey, so. Now conclusions.
I'm at the point where I'm like refusing to use my glasses, but I really do need them, but I just won't. These are like Walmart dollar readers. They don't really work. Um, so essentially seventy percent of the town, uh, or at least the respondents from our survey uh, showed full support for a community center of some sort.
Support was maintained with consideration of increase in property taxes and as we list, those are the amenities that were discussed.
Yeah. Good. That's what I was saying. So in conclusion, uh, we just wanna highlight that overall, there's major support from the community. When, when I move around town, I, I, I coach a lot of sports and I talk to people. They really show a serious desire for somewhere to be, whether it's a common area or a place to get together with people around town or a place that we can, our, our kids can, you know, play athletically and as well as, uh, the senior citizens in the town, somewhere for them to go as well. So it's really not just limited to the parks and recreation necessarily, but there's a whole other perspective, things that all can be found within the the Harriman report is, uh, essentially. Um, so it's with a community center, we really, really would ask for you to move forward with, uh, phase two of the community center. Right.
And then should we move forward with it? Um, we did do a draft of what some committee recommendations or new charge could be for the Community Center Committee. Um, continue to work with town management to investigate, uh, potential land locations. Work with the town inheritance to initiate the next phase of the contract, building and conceptual design. The committee would assist in drafting ideas for funding opportunities, including potential local partnerships, community outreach or other projects. And we would continue to review local community centers to gain insight into the best approach with overall operating cost, fundraising setup and recommended management of the facility. Our recommendation would be a one-year term to a promise deal. And that is what we have.
Yeah.
On our.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Don't leave here.
Don't leave him. Now you're not. It's not a bad. Uh, thank you, guys, for the work. I said this to you guys at many meetings, but it's important to hear publicly. Communities are very important. Community is growing. There's a lot of people that come back to this community that want their children to be raised in this community because they've been here. To have some central location where our community can foster that sense is a really important thing, especially understanding the growth of what we're going through in Topsom right now and the expected continual growth that we're going through. So thank you for this work. This is, is great for us to see where the town is sitting and, and where we believe, um. And looking at the future, the one question that I have is, given the idea of the scope that we're looking at putting forth for tonight, what's the ideal situation if a community center were to get passed? I mean, it still has to pass town vote and still go through a lot of different phases. What's the timeline that you guys would consider or think about before the ground could actually be broken?
I don't know that we've actually gotten to that point. I think we would rely heavily on Harriman's input into that decision. You have some thought?
Sure.
Yeah, so, uh, again, Mark Lee from Harriman, for those who haven't met me yet, but, uh, I think the idea is that if, if, uh, you said to us, uh, okay, tomorrow we want you to start the design of a new community center, the building, the site development. Uh, typically, to get to a point where you can ask the contractor, if it breaks ground, it's probably around, uh, six to eight months, the designs or something like that. And then you would imagine that the construction being where, um, uh, probably a, a year and a half.
Also, do we think that maybe we're putting the cart if we're looking for potential locations, land locations, and also looking at doing a design or a concept of design, simply because some of the land, we may have to change everything according to where that sits. Do you think we should find the land first and then work on the conceptual design so we're not wasting any waste time or money?
Yeah, uh, again, that's an excellent point, and what, what we've discussed internally is that uh, we can start gathering the information about what might be included in the center itself, but we wouldn't actually start the design of it until we know what the site is for that very reason, because the site is gonna impact very much uh, where the building would sit, how it's oriented, you know. Our door might be relative to parking, you know, amenities, so we very much need to know where the location is.
And what activities the town approves? Right, okay. Or doesn't approve. Should, should I say that too? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I don't have any questions, but my heart is with the Community Center Committee. I served on myself and I know the work and blood, sweat and tears that you've been through, and I just wanna thank you for all of your effort and well done.
Yeah, I think you did a great job. Great presentation. I was really struck by some of the first slide when you asked the question, what are you looking for? And that's, I think, all but one really mentioned activities which I would traditionally call recreational in terms of physical activity. So really, they emphasized to me that, you know, there are a lot of activities out there that people may not have access to today, although this is what you can play field at me, so. Great work. New charge later to meet.
If I could say one more thing also, I I like the idea of a community center. I just would urge us all to remember what a community center is and who, who's involved in the community, uh, to not have a specific focus on adults or seniors or children, but to have an equitable community center that encompasses everybody that can be in our community, allowing children to play and recreate, but also adults who are bringing kids around, because the adults need just as much connection in our community as children and seniors. Um, just something to throw out in that mix as we're working on design and then thinking about what the future of this committee does and where we're in the direction we're going in.
Yeah.
Ryan, the point that you make was wonderful because in the community focus groups we got, the biggest thing we came out of with the part that I attended was we want a place to come, to be part of the community. It wasn't a game. It wasn't coffee. It wasn't a, we wanted to have a place that we feel we belong and we see people that we live. And that was a real focus that came, I would say, the majority of.
Yeah.
That people feel like they don't have a downtown comparison. We discussed services in other communities and we got a clear message that the people who came to the focus group wanted to belong to Tops. So that was very important.
Thank you.
Hey, Roland, Roland, do you mind? Thank you. Uh, I've been back and forth on this ever since Dave proposed it many, many years ago now. Uh, I'm glad to see that the ball is still rolling on this. Uh, I think having children go to the Bath YMCA, I remember my original point was I didn't wanna see this go forward unless we examined all possible financial partnerships specifically with the YMCA, like what they're doing in Brunswick on the base where there's a satellite, um, whatever you wanna call it, facility. Uh, having my kids go to the Y in Bath, um, there's about maybe eighteen percent of people who apply for, uh, swim lessons actually get in. Uh, there's clearly a demand there that is not being met by the existing facilities in the region. Um, and I think the greater point here is how many people this town has in it now based on just market basket alone, one facility? You can't get through downtown anymore during the day. You can't get through the mall because of that one facility. Um, so I, I guess that's sort of a both good thing and a bad thing, uh, but I think our, but if, whatever we build, um, there would certainly be more than enough adequate demand to support it, uh, whether it's a, um, serviced by fee, uh, or we partner with another organization, um, or a membership, that sort of thing. I guess my one question, um, in calculating the impact of those amenities, uh, and this has come up time to time again, Pam, um, how did you guys incorporate staff into that? Because I think there's an estimate out there that one staff member with the town costs the town about one million dollars every five years. Uh, so I'm just wondering how, when you were looking at those numbers and figuring out what the impact to the tax rate would be, or to the, the tax burden would be. Um, how was staff cooperate?
Those don't include operational costs. That's to bill. Correct? There's a whole performer that we can put together and, and we have data from Miss Cassett in Lisbon that has been given to us to kind of take a look at their centers and, and what their operational costs are. It would really depend upon what amenities you're putting into it and, and all sorts of variables. That would be probably as we proceed to the end of the next session, if you choose to go.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next slide, public comment. Correspondents, uh, did you see an email? Yeah, email from a gentleman weeks ago asking us, you know, how's policy wise relative to public? So what we got is rest of town manager to take this back and do some research on it. Sort of, so what's happening in other communities so that we need to modern, modern block the heart from, from the, to do a policy. Order come on the next six. Uh, adjustments the agenda. We have none. Consent count, two over minutes. The regular select board meeting at five fifteen, two thousand twenty-four.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presenting.
Who is sent in all favor? Commander. Matt, did you vote?
It wasn't unanimous. I wasn't there. I'm abstaining.
Okay, thank you. So I was looking at. All right, um, public hearing, none, finish business, there's none, old business, it's none. Moving forward, new business, twenty-four dash sixty-nine, consideration of any appropriate action to issue a charge and turn the Community Center Committee, committee, retain professional assistants for the committee, and instruct the town manager to identify possible community center sites. Well, we just had this very robust presentation and discussion. In my opinion, I think, you know, we certainly do want to move forward. There are a number of next steps that we should be entertaining. Make sure everyone has a chance to speak up. So anything comes to mind that you want?
Um, I, I like the idea of the charge, the time, it's all good to me, um, as it's presented here, but I thought they go one step maybe twenty-two thousand dollars to go to the next step. I have that included if you can, so they would have the funding to move forward and face to.
Maybe, uh, my memo tried to set stage for this. It's, um, i- if you decide you wanna go ahead, you may wanna refer my memo for simple by the charge a little bit, the same items as they had. Um, and then I also have a motion to retain Harriman, um, to, for people that maybe aren't familiar. Initially, when we put out the R F P, um, Harriman gave us more than we were asking for. Um, and they were the middle bid. There was a bid that gave us had just what we ended up doing, and then there was one that was a lot more money that was, um, again, more than we're asking for. When we interviewed them, we were really like Harriman, we went back and we said, any chance you'd be willing to give us like half, two? Uh, so it'd be more in line with the, the lower bid we had. They were willing to do that, um, so then they were engaged and they worked with the committee. Everyone's been really happy with the work and the support that Harriman gave. So we went back to Harriman and said, could we buy the second part? And they said, actually, you want something a little different than our second part now. Um, and it also prices have gone up a little bit, but for twenty-two thousand dollars, Harriman would give the the Community Center Committee the support it needs to help assist with locating a site and designing, doing the plumber design of the building and things. Um, so the, the second motion in that my memo, uh, would help accomplish retaining Harriman Associates. We proposed to take that from the Topsom Community Fund, uh, which had the balance right now of around sixty thousand. Uh, so there's more than enough money to pay for that. Uh, and then the last thing is, is already come up tonight. It's important to try to find a location for, for. Um, we've got some ideas, but we get authority to talk to people. Uh and then the last thing is, is starting to come up tonight, it's important to try to find the location for, for, um we've got some ideas, but we get authority to talk to people. Um what I would envision is if you, um use the third motion here, if it probably your next meeting, we have an executive session with a layout for the select boards, potential options, and you can give me more instructions. Um then approach people and start talking and see what we can find out.
So to add the funding, we would have to add a separate, we have to add a.
So I've got three separate motions here, so you may want to think of A, B and C. So A is the charge, and it's on the first page of my memorandum. B is the motion to retain Harriman Associates and funding to pay for them. Um and then the last motion, the back of the memo was to want to allow us to start negotiating for location.
And is there a reason we have to wait on C?
I think they will all be tonight, you just, you know, just didn't work.
After this phase that we're discussing right now, what's next? Town vote, or is there another phase of research that we need to conduct?
As was alluded to, it's definitely gonna make a big difference, site.
Yeah.
So, um we need to find the site and then let Harriman do their work, they've come up with projected costs and things. Uh but yeah, without a town vote, there's absolutely not going to be any building built.
Right, so is that what would happen after this? We, the charge would be for a year? And after the end of that year, we would be looking to, to town vote?
Definitely.
If, if that's the case, in the charges that we're giving, are we also trying to, I guess, for lack of a better term, lock down what activities are actually going to be included in the community center? Or are the town gonna vote on yes or no, we want a community center? Just as a yes or no, and then the next phase is we gotta go back and decide what goes in that community center if it's voted in?
I think that's almost too much, um voting.
Yeah, right.
So you, you've already had the survey, you know the priorities, we're gonna get the expertise of Harriman, working with the committee to kind of sort through, see what seems reasonable. They're gonna report back to you, you know, you may, once you see some of the numbers, you may say, yeah, this item's a bigger pill than we think we want to take to a town meeting.
Right.
So it's really gonna be the committee and the select board that are now gonna massage the building.
And what actually goes in?
Right.
Okay, so then that's happening in this phase is finding out what is it that we're trying to put in for sure?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we just don't want to kind of, yeah, you know.
We don't, I mean, we got a tenth of the population to put their input in. We'll see when the next vote is, it show up.
Not that it's on the table, because the lot's gonna be, have other things done with, but at different points, people kept suggesting the lot across the street would be a perfect place. If the lot across the street was selected, you couldn't um do a building, say with pools, because it's just not big enough.
Okay, thank you.
All right, can we do this as one motion or we need this?
Um I'm gonna begin with making a motion that we, uh, accept the charge to the community center as we recorded in the memo. Is that sufficient or do you need? Okay, um the propose, my mo- proposed motion is to charge the community center committee as follows. One, to work with the town manager's office to investigate potential land locations. Two, to work with the town staff and Harriman to develop a building conceptual design. And three, to assist and identify funding opportunities for the community center, potential local partnerships and community outreach. And four, to review other local community centers to gain insight into operating cost fundraising and recommended management of a facility. And this is a one-year charter. I can go all that. Uh the committee term shall be extended to September fifth, twenty twenty-five, and its current members may continue to serve. The committee shall periodically report back on the charge to the select board so that it may provide input and guidance should it choose to do so.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, will you second it all in favor? Now, what was your vote?
Matt was for, four, three to one. Four to one. Thank you. Okay, the.
Second page.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute a contract amendment for Harriman for a community center preliminary design and cost estimate in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars, but the funding did come from the top community fund.
Second.
Second.
Will you second it all in favor? Close. Chair is four to one.
And then the final motion that I'd like to make is to instruct the town manager to work with the community center committee and Harriman to identify possible community center sites. The town manager should report to the select board on their viability of potential sites so that it may determine whether it authorizes the town manager to enter into negotiations with respect to a particular site or site.
Sure, the second one.
Sorry.
All right, will you second it all in favor, motion? Close. Motion chair is four to one.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, consideration of any appropriate action to carry over the amounts from FY twenty-four as detailed in the memo.
Hi, this is basically our yearly cleanup to close the books on the town. Uh the first one is, who's the first one here? There are capital projects funds, was it fund that was set up prior to I came here? And I, um, basically what we've been doing is just trying to spend it down and get rid of that. Oh, not right, it, it basically depends between the capital projects and special revenue. The capital projects for the most part is funded through general taxation. Special revenue is usually an agreement or donation, something that has legal requirements to it. So the first one is our, uh capital projects and that has totaled four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I've given the weeds on it. Uh the first one is a, is a striping project from two thousand twenty that has not been completed yet. It was a specific project. Um the second one is our town revaluation that we we've actually, I combined them this year between the, um, we used to have two, one was for commercial property and one was for real estate. And we just combined them to one and that balances a hundred and seventy-three thousand. Uh the can be Tops and Community Fund that we were just speaking about, that was from general fund money. And that was, uh, twenty, uh sixty thousand, about sixty thousand. And the final one was the PR unfunded liability, and basically what that is, was to help us if we had a rush on severance pay, if, if we had a mass layover, we had a mass retirement, that we wouldn't be caught short. And that's what the hundred and eighty is, there's no, there's no contributions. Since I've been here, the only one that's getting contributions is the revaluation reserve. And eventually we'll get a revaluation and that will go away and then we'll start a new one. So that's the capital improvements. The special revenue, uh basically is just to show you the different, um uh just the different funds that we have out there, I'm not asking you to really approve anything, I'm just giving you a, a shot at what we have in there. Uh and that right now is at seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Can you say what page you're on, because the memo is using different.
I know, because that, these are all reports from the system and depending on how you did it, um, let's see.
So do the titles on the memo, are they correct?
Yeah, that's all I'm making. So, uh, the one that's capital project has a page four on it. The one that has, uh, special revenue has page three on it. And then the rest of them was everything from last year's budget that we really want to carry forward. The first one being, uh, the rest of the capital projects funds in the general fund. So these are projects for the most part that we fund yearly. And basically what we do is if we don't have time to get everything done, we usually just carry it over, add it to this year's and then just keep rolling balances forward, and that is one point four billion. That is, then the, the rest are pretty straightforward. Um professional services contractual, that's for our RECO project. And that is, uh, basically the source of the fund, our TIF funds. So if, if you said, no, no, we don't want to carry that forward, it would go right back into the TIF. The next one is the payroll adjustment, that's the one that we use in the current year, if we have if we have vacancies and sometimes we end up paying someone more or somebody, uh, that's more benefits than what we planned for. Basically, that's what we use that when we have like a worker's comp uh audit premium, we might use it, would use it, that it's all things related to payroll for the most part. Uh and that's, that's general fund money, and again, these are all ones that we carry forward every year. The last two are just, I'm gonna call them a one-off because I don't expect that we would ever do it again. That's a never. The first one is the library, they had fourteen thousand dollars left from what we appropriated for them in FY twenty-four. And we're asking for the five thousand dollars because we, we didn't have time to get the new telephone system. And we knew that we were gonna have money left in this account, so that was the five thousand dollar request. And then the, the last one for seven thousand is from the central services. And basically this request was for, uh, some new GIS, I think it was a seat maybe or. There you go, word facing GIS board. Um and that was, the estimate was around seven thousand dollars. And we didn't, I, I mean, we actually had it in the budget, we just didn't have time to do it, I mean, it, because it's, it's sort of a collaboration between assessing and planning, they both have, uh, and we didn't have, really have enough time between changing of the garden, planning and getting it together, so we wanted the seven thousand dollars so that we could do that one.
Well, it's, it's gonna be plugged into our website, so that we're, from our website, so that you could go onto our assessing data easier. So it may save questions to the assessing department, less the citizens who do more research on a particular piece of property, maybe that they want to buy or looking at. Um, we might have, show some of our different zones for zoning as well as just the parcel itself. Um, we could even put things in like, because of our lighting system, when it was converted, we now have the G, GPS locations of every street light in town. So we could theoretically have a layer of streetlights, so that could have different layers that can be added to it, so that's.
You can have a tree inventory, what the trees are. Don't laugh. What? I said we already, the PGIS, you have a layover on that? Basically, the capital projects and the special revenues, th- those are really for your information, so you know what we have out there. But the last paragraph, the one point four down through the seven, that's what I'm asking you to vote on and say, okay, I'll do.
So if your motion was to, uh, that you have to carry it with the amounts from fiscal year twenty-four, that would, that you listed in the memo, that would actually cover everything you talked about.
Yes.
Mark, I got a question.
Yeah.
All right, so this is sort of combining this in our next agenda item, but it's necessary in this case. Um, so this is money we haven't spent, but we've taxed people for, correct? This, uh, approximately one point five million or so that hasn't been spent yet. I'm not including the, the TIF money because I know that's separate, but adding up the one point four, the sixty-seven, the five and the seven, that's about one point five mil. And so that's on top of the six million dollar surplus that we have this year, is that correct? If you add those two things together, that's money we've taxed people for, but we haven't actually spent the money for, is that correct?
It's not included in that section.
That's unacceptable, Mark. That's crazy, that is unreal. Six million dollars we're taxing people for, I mean, corporations are gouging us out at the grocery store right now and all right, we can get into this when we talk about surplus, but that's, that's unbelievable, thank you.
This is money like paving that didn't get done last year, and then it's so carried forward to get done this year, and then actually, but if it's been this is things that were basically, most of its capital reserves that were set aside in the past, but the project hasn't come yet, and to be prudent, you know, the money gets saved for the project.
The Frankwood Bridge, that was from, uh, out of the one point four million, you got the Frankwood Bridge, that was been there for, I would say, two or three years. And we're, the twenty, FY twenty-five is when we're gonna pay it out.
It's three hundred thousand, the state said we needed to pay for our park from the side of Frankwood Bridge. We could have written the check three years ago, but now we're getting pretty good interest on that, and the state hasn't asked for the money yet. Um if we give the money, if we spend it, we have to pre-tax for it in essence, when we, when it comes time to pay the state, if we give up the money now.
I haven't, um, I haven't looked at a lot of it, but I know like under PW Capital, in July he spent like half of that for a street sweeper, right?
No.
So that four forty-eight is really a timing where the ordering of the equipment, it didn't come back, it didn't come back in yet. Uh those are the ones that I could comment on, we got, we got a quarter of a million in paving, which is actually something, yeah, that's, that's a pretty good improvement this year.
I mean, it really is housekeeping, it's carrying forward capital reserves we set aside in the past to use them for the purposes.
Right, exactly.
Yep, well, I've done this four years now, I understand, or five years, um, but on top of the surplus that we have, that we're gonna be talking about in a moment, this is crazy to me, um, but we can talk about that in a few moments.
But there, everything that's in this, there's anticipated spending to set the offset, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, just a question of when, right?
Exactly.
Do you feel it's like within the next, so is this something that potentially will be on it?
Some of it may be beyond, um, if some of it is TIF money that we haven't come up with a purpose for yet, for instance. So we don't want to spend it just for the sake of spending it, so we want to spend it on the right improvement. But the paving money, we are getting bought up, so that should be spent the next twelve months. As Kathy said, probably relatively soon the state's gonna ask for three hundred thousand for our park, so that money is gonna go.
I'm pretty sure they said it, she said it was FY twenty-five, that we would actually be cutting the check to them, so that should happen this year. Any other question?
Yeah, I just, I, I appreciate that, because I think it's very important that, you know, we understand this is the money doesn't have, it's not allocated, doesn't have a purpose assigned to it.
But this money does have.
This one.
Basically, you know, this money is going to be spent in the future surplus. It's not gonna end up being in surplus, that's, that's. So what do we need for motion?
Um I'd like to make a motion to carry over the amounts from fiscal year twenty-four, carry forward to fiscal year twenty-five. Detailed in the memo from Kathy Ricker dated eight twenty-one.
Question with second?
Second.
Will you second it all in favor? Close. All right, I am twenty-four seventy-one. Consideration of inappropriate, uh, termination of the amount of surplus to be allocated to offset the capital I think of twenty-five tax.
So we have, um, you, policy that says that you strive to have a maximum of sixteen percent, um, of the budget set aside as unallocated surplus. Um, the math shows that this year, now we've got about, um, three point two million dollars in exit of that sixteen percent. Uh so the question is, what do we do with it? The former town manager had anticipated using about one point eight seven million of it to offset this, uh, budget. That would result in a next net tax commitment of increase of five point five percent. We ran a two other scenarios to show if we spent more or less surplus. Problem was, the more surplus you spend, the more problem you may have in future years, uh, because it may feel good, it's like spending your savings account. So you spend it all in one year to keep, maybe make the taxes lower or maybe knowing to reset, but once the saving account's gone, uh, if you've been offsetting operating expenses next year, you're gonna have to have a significant tax increase to, uh, maintain services as I. To uh maintain services as they currently are. So the goal is to try to have a relatively smooth tax rate. If you want, last year, we only spent three hundred fifty thousand of surplus, so three fifty seven at the at in the budget. We added another, when we bought the parcel and beside the transfer station, that spent another hundred and that was hundred fifty seven. So we spent a little more at that point. Um former town manager increased capital expenses this year by about a million dollars. We're averaging a little under two the past few years, and this year, even this budget was three. So his thinking was that you would spend extra surplus this year on capital because it's on time expensive. We're getting taken care of and things will benefit the town for a long period of time. Um. If you wanted to just spend what we spent last year for surplus and do the million in capital, that's one of the scenarios in your memo. Um which would redel- result in a almost eight percent net commitment over last year. Uh and then another scenario in memo is that we spent extra surplus this year, which wouldn't be a number we could afford to spend every year. But if we went up to two point three uh million in surplus this year. That would allow us to bring a tax or net tax commitment in around three point five percent. Um one caveat I'm gonna say to make it clear, and Justin, I'm sure will um elaborate neatly on it. We're talking net tax commitment, not talking about effect on the mill rate, uh because that's also affected by the change in assessment. If we did not adjust assessments every year, we would not be getting a hundred percent of our reimbursements from the state for business equipment tax and for homestead exemption. And that's the situation Brunswick's in right now, because they haven't adjusted their values by two thousand and sixteen. So they're not getting all the state reimbursement that they can. Um we probably have one of the best assessors in the state in Justin, and Justin tweaks our assessments every year. And we get it, it's almost, it's like a report card that for main revenue. And they tell us if they're happy with his work, and if they're happy, we get to keep doing, getting a hundred percent reimbursement. Um we got another report card up on this year, and they're happy with his work. And so. He right, there won't be a massive jump in one year because Justin keeps an eye on the market and he's adjusting things every year. Um so his adjustments also going to figure the mill rate. Obviously, as the value of the town goes up. But the net amount we have to raise from taxes affected by the surplus, so that's the number we're focusing on tonight. Um if you, the way the market has been, say, the properties on the lower end are not increasing as much or as fast as the ones in the higher end. Uh so it could be that someone with uh waterfront home in Topson. Um could well see their taxes go up by more than five point five percent of the net commitment. So in a mobile home, um may see those go up less. So. We don't want to mislead anyone to thinking that the number we use is gonna exactly translate to every single person's tax, but. So I'll just give that caveat. The um.
Do you want to talk about the senior tax stabilization?
Sure, like so. Personally, I'm a little nervous about using numbers big as two point three, you know, and I understand uh select and. Like board member, Nixon's concerns that he wants us to not have more money than necessary. Um but I also want to make sure if we have that rainy day come, um we have the money sitting there when we need it. Because we have to pay big checks to MSAD seventy five all at once. Um if we we we're in the luxury, we're not taking out tax anticipation notes. Uh because we have enough reserves that we don't have to borrow money and pay interest for short term stuff. Um so to go from spending three hundred fifty thousand surplus in last year's budget, plus the extra money for the the transfer station land. To go from two point three million, um makes me a little nervous. Reason why I'm okay with it, however, or recommending that we do this is because about twenty percent of our folks in Topson. Um had their, they didn't pay their tax increases last year. The state and Maine paid their tax increases because of the state senior stabilization program. Um the state has ended that program. Uh so that for about twenty percent of our taxpayers, including many on fixed incomes, they're gonna be getting two years worth of tax increases at once. Uh so trying to mo- um modify that as best we can without losing, trying to have a smooth tax rate. Um we're recommending that we do spend two point three million of the surplus this year to try to make this year's net commitment. Increase about three point five percent. Um one other little point I'll add to this is this. You may recall, the state didn't budget enough money for the senior stabilization program. Um so our payments from the state were delayed. Uh when we finally got it, they all of a sudden decided to lower revenue sharing. So our revenue sharing is about two hundred fifty thousand less than it was last year. That's worth almost a percent on the tax spend of twelve point nine. Um so part of the reason, if what if the state had honored what it was supposed to do in revenue sharing, and we spent the two point three, we'd be looking at um just. Around two point six net commitment injury.
Well, historically, I mean, that surplus is a result of us collecting more revenue than anticipated. As much as it is from being expenses being on it, but.
And this year, it's what uh finance director Rick addressed, it's about half and half.
It is about half and half. I just wanted to highlight some of the differences in in the changes this year. Um for revenue, the revenue was up around five hundred thousand. The expenses were down about six hundred thousand. For the ex- for the revenue, we had about, uh we had a hundred and fifty one thousand more in excise tax than we budgeted for. Um the interests went off the charts because when we passed the twenty four budget. Um interest rates hadn't risen yet. Um so we ended up, we budgeted thirty and we got three hundred thousand. So that's, that's the bulk of it. We got, we did get uh a little bit more in. Solid waste, recreation and revenue sharing. That was about fifteen sixteen, about a hundred thousand on its own. In the expenditure side, um the big one was uh. Public works. Uh economic development, we've we've had that, that was about a hundred and forty. Uh public works was about a hundred and fifty to overlay, which is something that is built into the tax commitment, which never. The only thing that goes against overlay is it's really just raising more revenue than you would have in your budget. Uh we do that to round out the middle rate, and we also do it to cover any abatements that happen on the taxes. So. That was the bulk. And then we had, uh let's see, planning and tax collection. We had longs um.
Vacancies.
So all in all, the revenues were were up four or five hundred. The expenses were less, around six hundred. And that's basically what happened during this year. Has been against budget. And that, and it's all in there. I just thought I'd give you a little bit more to chew on and. Understand why those variances happened.
Historically, our revenues have always exceeded our plan. I mean, at least for the last five or six years. I know in twenty twenty, I think we were way over.
I I I I try to get those revenues up there because I believe the same thing, that we under, we under budget revenues, yes.
So I think that's just part of the shared process, to be as tight as possible on this.
We're trying, we're trying to do that. And last year, we had, we had the ARCA money, a million bucks went right into surplus. So I mean, that's part of the six million dollar too also.
Kathy, you said the revenue sharing went up and market said it went down, which is.
Going down in twenty five.
Down in twenty five, and up in twenty four.
Okay.
Can do is rely on what they tell us that that we're gonna get, and it's al- almost never in that. So what we budgeted and what we got was about that's.
Any questions on the plan?
Tons.
So your recommendations to.
Recommendations to what?
And then, once that's taken on the surplus, where are we going to do the step for?
Or not that story, and that's not even ordinance, but it's, they have policy. Um so what I would envision is we'll come back probably to the next meeting with the debt number, but it'd be about a million left. We're still over the sixteen percent. So we we could either take that money, if you didn't allocate it tonight towards taxes. Um you could take that money and either. Um put it towards some capital projects, like for instance, we know Tedford Road is gonna cost a lot more than we had funded it. Um for those that aren't aware, we had anticipated Tedford Road would cost between five to six hundred thousand to replace the culvert. Um when Wright Pears got into it and did soil samples, they found that the ground is very unstable underneath the road. So they have to do a special project with what's called lightweight fill. Um we also were trying to get some state land to help pay for part of it. We've applied for two grant cycles. We haven't got it. We're gonna apply for one more this fall. Um but if we don't get that, we're looking at that now costing about a million, um just all on our dollar. Uh the sidewalks in Tedford Road were estimated to be around two hundred thousand because our hope was to do them the way public works has done the ones in Topson Fair Mall Road. And just add sidewalks into the current road bed, so basically adding pavement, but that's it. Um when Wright Pears started doing that design, they found uh that drainage needs to be addressed at the same time. So that project has gone from just doing sidewalks to essentially rebuilding the road. Um so in the neighborhood of somewhere between two and three million. Uh that project, uh the water district has asbestos pipe, which they're thinking they might like to replace at the same time. So they're thinking they like to go in with us on the project, and if they did so, they'd pay for six feet with the trench and the work. So there may be ways to bring the number down. So I'm not saying that project's gonna cost two to three million. I'm saying it's gonna cost a lot more than two hundred thousand. Uh so there's upcoming capital projects that it might be prudent to set that money aside to go towards. Um the other choice is you could also, because this is just something you said your target is sixteen percent maximum. Um you could actually change the target if you wanted to, so we just had some extra money sitting there for the rainy day or to offset taxes next year of smooth things. Or to use for whatever project in the future or. So I'd say that probably will be the next meeting, that this goes to tonight, get a better number of the surpluses. If you spend two point three tonight. With the tax rate.
What's his number?
Any more questions?
Yeah, uh I can just have a zoom out lens and make this really easy for those following along and. Uh. Currently in our surplus account, we have an excess. Is that accurate?
Yeah, no.
I see the.
But now we have um six point three million is not appropriated on a sign, basically what you would call surplus. All those other numbers that I mentioned before, not included in that number. So the six point three is just.
Although that number assumes spending the one point eight.
Oh, that it does consume spending one point eight.
So so it's the six point three plus one point eight seven is what unallocated surplus is.
Right, and that's part of the fund balance. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. What percentage does that put us at? Because we know that that one point eight, we're hopefully spending it this year because it was allocated last year. Uh finished projects, something that took a little bit longer, things that are out of our control, that kind of needs to go. If we consider the six point three, where, what percentage of our overall budget is that? That's about half our operations, isn't it?
Say that again.
That's about.
The total, the total for this year's fiscal budget is thirty one million and change. So it would be six point three divided by thirty one million.
Sound about right.
Just for the sake of.
In in. This surplus or this fund balance has accrued annually. So in fiscal year twenty twenty, we had a hundred eighty eight thousand. In twenty one, we had one million. In twenty two, we had one point three. And that fund balance has just been growing year to year. Is that?
Yeah, you wanted to look at fund balances if you're netting.
Yeah.
And then you reach, and then it closes to reaching earnings every year.
Yeah.
So that's the accumulation of sur- budget surpluses over the life of the town.
Right, and that looks like in twenty three, fiscal year twenty three, we had a large, large surplus of three point. Three, six, five.
Well, you're looking at, remember, it isn't the amount of surplus we earned each year. That's the amount of surplus that was spent on the budget each year.
Yes. That's that were.
And the reason for that year there was three million is because we paid off two bonds or.
So that was spent out of the surplus.
Right.
Correct. Surplus that we have now is just accrued over time, and we just haven't spent it.
Well, every year, whatever we use to reduce the commitment will come out of it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That clarifies my questions.
Alright, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. The surplus is basically. Money that we budgeted for. On projects that we weren't able to do. Correct?
The unallocated surplus is money we budgeted to spend on everything for a particular year. That we didn't end up spending on everything in particular year, added up over time.
So.
We just let the savings account accrue accumulate over time, and that went six point three.
So we go through the budget. If we have this, these projects that we weren't able to do. Then when is it ever gonna get caught up? And why keep budgeting for projects that we can't get done? I think it's a rolling. It's it's not projects that we're not doing. It's just that. Parts of each. Capital budget can't get done in the twelve month period. And a lot of them started in twenty twenty when the supply run broke down. And and still to this day, I believe that they're still having trouble by getting police cars and. Getting equipment done. Like I said, I know that um. His street sweeper wasn't, he wasn't able to complete that until July.
The ambulance you approved a couple weeks ago, be buying for two more years, just because it's that much bigger liability for it.
That six point four is basically a number at eight point two, that's all this.
Exactly.
Because it changes from month to month, that number's been changed.
Right, as projects get done.
Right.
And but. And equipment purchase, and equipment purchase, right? So anything.
Even though we won't get that ambulance for two years, does that mean we still pay part of that?
No, so it's part of that. But part of those, that one point four million is.
It's been allocated for that.
So that money is, some of it is like allocated for things already that we need to keep in there. That's why part of it is a twenty three percent.
The the stuff you did earlier tonight, um that what we call housekeeping, that's things like that. That's money that we've basically already pledged. We just haven't had to write the check yet.
But we need to keep it because we just need to write the check.
Right.
And that keeps going, rolling.
Right, but to keep budgeting for these projects that just. But you can't do a project unless you have the approval.
Then you can't.
Have the appropriation. So you can't just say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna buy it and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do it. And then we'll pay part in two years, and then we'll raise the money in two years. You 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 need the approval in order to to begin the project and have a project. I mean, I guess we could. I don't know. An ambulance in the budget? For another new ambulance? And just having this new one in in two years?
There's no ambulance in this year's budget. There was one in the reserves that you basically spent a couple meetings ago, but we, but one hundred thousand won't actually write the check to the company. We, I don't pay deposit, but we won't write most of the check until we get the.
That costs me good. Well, by the time the ambulance gets.
Now they promised they'll go under that, right?
Yeah. Uh. It's starting to make sense to me.
To answer your first question while we, while we were talking. Um the total amount of money that's been, you know, the county is obligated us to pay, the school's obligated to pay, the town's obligated to pay based on the budget we passed in. Uh May is thirty one million dollars. Sixty four ninety two. If we spent no money of surplus this year, it's that um it would be. Sorry, wrong. If we s- we could spend that one point eight, the town manager allocated. But the resulting number, if we can spend any extra, would be, would have twenty point four surplus, unallocated surplus. So if we spend the extra money tonight, um then there'd be about a million left, allocated surplus above the sixteen percent.
And how much of that six point three surplus? Is still kind of committed to other things? Do we know that answer? None of it?
But if we didn't have that, you know, how much does this, did the school just bill us that we had to pay them for their? Should we just get MSAD seventy five bill?
Oh, because we pay over a million dollars a month.
So and our taxes come in basically, for the most part, twice a year, October and April. So if you don't have, you know, think of your home check. So and our taxes come in basically for the most part twice a year, October and April. So if you don't have, you know, think of your home check, check. If you're running it close to, you're spending money as soon as it comes in, you're gonna have times you don't have it coming in. The alternative for us, if we do that, is we have to take out tax anticipation notes and pay interest and, so you need extra money just to smooth out the operating. Or what happened in two thousand twenty, when um, all of a sudden COVID came and there was a crisis and there was one hundred people would be able to pay their taxes, Thompson was in a position that it. Allowed it, give people some leeway and stuff. Not every town was in that situation.
So if we spend the two point three that you guys are suggesting. For us today, what does that bring our percentage to with? The fund balance.
It would be, I can redo the math if you want, but it's basically about a million dollars over the sixteen percent. So it's about seventeen and a half.
Which is in the range, isn't it sixteen to eighteen or not?
Twelve to sixteen.
Twelve to sixteen.
Derek, for some reason you're eighteen.
One of, one of the things you have to keep in mind is if you're gonna go out for a really large bond. And you have to go to a bond rating company, they're gonna look for your fund balance policy and they're gonna look for the fact. You have a fund balance. So that is a consideration, um, if you're setting yourself up to have to borrow tax anticipation. One of the things, I mean, we have to pay a million dollars every month for three or four months before we even get our. Before we get the bulk of our tax collection, we also have to pay about two million dollars to the county because that's due in the month of October. So there is a need, um, July, July to October fifteenth is our biggest. Problem in terms of cash flow, that's when we need it most.
Because they get the money.
How many gets the money all the time?
Timing issue here, because they get each of the money for all year.
And they massively increased this year too. So insignificant in the grand scheme, but still a large increase.
Do we still have bonds we owe?
We done this year.
I think one, I think there's a tiny one left next year. I think one ends this year and then the final one ends next year, but the one that ends next year is. I think it's five hundred, five hundred and eleven, I'm just gonna do that. It's about five hundred and eleven thousand right now. But we paid off that three million, even the year that we used the three million, we. We still, the fund balance still didn't go down all that much, it only went down about a million dollars, keep it snapped.
So the last question I guess I have is. The alternative, right? This is a lot of money to sit there, taxpayer dollars, the alternative is just give it back to the taxpayer, but that puts us at risk in the town because.
Years of cash flow.
We, and then ultimately we have a lower tax amount one year, and the following year you have a massive climb. Thereby making these big spikes that go big, small, big, small, and that. Puts a a massive burden on people versus trying to keep that tax rate somewhat fluid up and down by as little as possible. And that's part of the reason why we need to keep this. Our discussion is how much do we keep in there? And it sounds like. Even that two point three that we're saying to pay for the things that are being suggested, we still have more than. Up sixteen percent. That the select board decided in twenty twenty one was the the number, the max spot, and we still have more than that in the account. But it's still used to better the town. Matter, I mean, whether it goes to the town individuals as a taxpayer, or whether it goes to improving the roads in our town. Or whether we have a building that. We have that still work that needs to get done or trim work, like this building has some stuff that to get done. We still kind of need that, and that money still gets spent on things that taxpayers need for this town, so it's prudent to keep something there. I think the question is how much is?
Isn't that what the fund balance is for?
That's what this is.
And and the sixteen percent, isn't that not?
Well, I think just you saying, we think there's another million that could possibly. This is some of these unexpected changes and will be, yeah.
Well, that's the other thing, bus, bus fluctuations so big, so quick. We can be lucky one year with budgeting a certain amount, if we under budget and have a surplus, then next year. What we're noticing with building materials, for example, and road materials, they can go through the roof. And we budget a year in advance, so even if we budgeted what we think it's going to be, there's never a guarantee. And that's why we have a surplus now, because the revenues are higher as a projection and. You know, we're spending less because things worked out in our favor for a few years and wrote to build this up, and now. We're looking to spend it.
If you have bad, really bad storm and all of a sudden three roads get washed out, money goes away. So.
Yeah.
It is true.
Brian, you'd said that there was, that was the other alternative. The other alternative, the third one, is that we. Try to cut some of the fat out of the budget. Um, I understand, completely get where you're coming from, there could be an emergency, there could be whatever. Uh, this wasn't due to revenue, Kathy, you said that this was half and half, they basically offset one another, is that correct? The increase in revenue this year? Offset the increasing costs?
Um, no, the revenue, the revenue was over and the expenses were under. So that, so that was like a double barrel hit to fund balance.
In a good way.
This is a perpetual, perpetual thing on this board, um, and it hasn't just been me, uh, where, and Mark, this is your first year, obviously, so I'm sorry for unloading on on you here, but. Um, we had a four million dollar surplus last year that we were told was going to be used on culverts. And here we are with a six million dollar surplus this year, um, that we're talking about using for an emergency project, whatever. Uh, we gotta do a better job than this. This is, this is crazy. Uh, we're, we're at our fund balance, that's fantastic, we're at eighteen, I think in twenty twenty, if I recall, because I remember a pretty deep discussion between Ruth and Dave about that. Uh, we bought down this tax rate in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, and we still have a six million dollar surplus this year. Uh, despite all the, oh my god, inflation and everything like that, yeah. Clearly, that did not come to pass. Two point nine percent inflation, yeah. Uh, a little bit different than what we were talking about last, last year. Um. We just gotta do a better job at this, and and part of it's my fault for not questioning more when we're going over the budget, but. We can't have a six million dollar surplus, uh, and in this day and age, when we're getting gouged by corporations left and right. Um, and then blaming it on the government for inflation, it's, this is, this is crazy. Uh. Alright, I'm gonna get off my soapbox now. I'm a fan of the two point three. That's, there's nothing else we can do here, so that's what we're gonna have to do, in my opinion.
And I'd like to make a motion to allocate surplus funds in the amount of two point three million to the fiscal year twenty five.
Second.
Second.
Move to second and I'll bear the motion. Yeah, it was. Good description, thank you. Okay, I am twenty four seventy two. Consideration in any appropriate action to authorize the police chief to develop the comfort dog program. Will be FY two thousand twenty six budget, with a final approval dependent upon the amount of funds. The American Legion raises as well as the impact on the town budget, will be decided as part of the budget process.
Chief. Good evening, Art Hagan, Chief of Police. I can promise you compared to these last two items, the dog, if we're talking about pennies. Or what, and I'll relax a little bit about the numbers here. So. Recently, I was approached by the commander of Thompson's American Legion Post two O two. Jim Burak, uh, with an opportunity. What I consider an opportunity, where they want to raise money for a. For the police department, and it ended up being for the school and the community, to be honest with you, but. Rather than me talking for the commander, perhaps I could just phone him up since he came here tonight and explain their purpose and just also to show he's not just another pretty face and you can ask him a couple of questions. Then I'll get back into what we're looking at and what we're actually researching for the program, if that's okay.
I have one, um, I have Jim Burak. Also the commander of Free Garber American Legion Post two O two. Um, so emotional support, mental wellbeing, children. Pretty big. Um, you know, there are days when I come home from work and I I just feel miserable because, you know, it's. But I pull in the door yard and I have my best friend waiting there for me. And I could tell him everything about everything that went on that day and he's like, oh, that's too bad, I'll throw that ball. If I had a dollar for every time my best friend made me smile, I'd be a wealthy man. So to to have a friend like that, to greet every kid at school who won't judge you. You know, by what you have, what your status is in 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 the community. Something like that. You know. To greet you and to, you know, contact throughout the day, I think will be huge for a lot of kids. Um, you know, even during the summertime, you know, that dog's not gonna have the summer off, I'm sure there's, there's other community services that. A canine like that can perform in in helping, you know, improve relationships between the the department and, you know, the community. And having a sport dog like that working with Officer Bell, I think would be amazing. So I am working hard right now, trying to raise money, um, I reached out and hoping. Thing goes well, I might be able to apply for a grant. With this, but so far I've already raised thirty five hundred dollars. This dog, and I'm hoping to raise. Twenty to start this. So I really, you know, feel strong about this program and how much it could help, you know, kids in school mostly, but, you know, in the community.
If you do raise all the money for the dog. Won't there be a cost of training, the resource officer, handle the dog? Whatever.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to ask Mr. Hagan. Thank you all.
So after Commander Burak came, approached me with the idea, to be honest, I had to do some research, so. I reached out to the York Police Department, they're. They're pretty much the leader in Maine as far as comfort dogs. Comfort dogs aren't new to law enforcement in the United States, but they are new in Maine. In fact, when I spoke to an officer who's a school resource in Massachusetts, they have over ninety comfort. In Massachusetts alone. It's a program that's been used a lot, it's just new in Maine. So to answer your question. Reached out to York, the York officer that has the canine came up here, they gave us all their numbers and everything, which is where I came up with the numbers of. Start up costs are roughly ten thousand dollars, that includes obedience training. Uh, the officer from Massachusetts that I spoke to gave me similar numbers as well, and he does a lot of work with the kennel that we're looking at in New Hampshire, which is where we would probably be getting the dog. Um, part of the initial ten thousand dollar cost would be for obedience training. So comfort dogs don't need the kind of training like you would have if you had a search and rescue dog. Or if you had a drug detection dog or anything like that, it's just obedience. You need to be able to know that when you go into a school or any type of community setting, that the dog's gonna listen, and so. That's what, that's what all the agencies do, is they just handle her. In our particular case. In meeting with what the legion was hoping this uh dog would go to, as well as just what would meet the needs of our PD, because the York. Uh, but we would be looking at putting it into school. So in this particular case. Officer Matthew is here, she would be the one that would be handling the dogs, and we would send her to obedience school with the. So that, those costs are are the initial.
Have you talked to the school about? Feel of having a comfort dog in the school?
They're all for it, um, so maybe it was a teacher or a counselor, somebody was. Or social, so they had a person bringing a dog in up until last year, and she's not doing that anymore, so they're used to having a dog. Because beyond, was it about a trained dog? It was, okay, so the reason I asked it, some agencies across New England. Aren't training the dog, they're just bringing in a dog that's kind of calm and everybody seems to like it, and to me, that's how the Massachusetts. Was by bringing his personal. And then they realize, okay, we're gonna have a dog in around everybody, we need to, we need to get some training and some certifications. The recurring costs, roughly by what we have seen from and heard from other agencies. Eight thousand a year, that includes, you know, the vet fees, food. Membership and a therapy dog program because you want to keep up certifications and keep up the trainings. Roughly eight thousand at the top. Yeah. You know, part of the initial start up cost, dogs right now, where we're looking, which would be. In English lab, looking at a lab just because generally speaking, their demeanor. You know, very calm, it's a calming presence. The the place in New Hampshire that we're looking at, which is also where York and the officer from Mass, got their dogs. In New Hampshire, they're, they're very careful. They 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 breed their dogs twice a year and then are very careful with, all the dogs don't end up being their dogs, they go. Make sure that different dogs have the personality to do this. We've, we've done a lot of work. Just me calling around and speaking to different people, other than York. The only other place in Maine that really has a good program going right now is. Skyle, but they didn't seem as happy to come down and visit with us from for Skyle as it was for York, so it was a little more convenient for the York officer. Uh, and again, I spoke to Massachusetts. So. That's where we are, we're just looking at the beginning of it. The reason I wanted to speak to you all about this, give you some background, was. We don't want to keep moving forward and not necessarily wasting, you know, your time, allegiance time, but. If there's not really a, um, if there's not some support from you all, we also don't want. You know, the post to just keep raising money. We wanted to throw the idea out to you, see what you thought, uh, you know, we did uh write up in here just. Post motion, which includes giving them time for the next budget to see how much money they could raise, so how much it could really affect the town as far as the town budget. We're here to ask or answer any questions that we can, just to see, again, what the mood of the select board is, if you're interested in this and if you want us to keep looking.
I made a phone call today to a therapy dog trainer, just to find out, would this be in competition to anything that's happening in Maine? And she said, absolutely not, if the police are involved, let them move forward. Yes, 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 she said, there's not enough programs. She said, I don't care what it costs, it's really gonna be worthwhile, this is what she does for a living. She says she, she lives in Maine half a year and in Florida half a year, and she trains in both places. And she said that there are so many comfort dog programs in Florida, and there's like nothing or very little in Maine. And so she was like, I just wanted to get someone's opinion, and so I, I made the phone call. And she was like, yes, 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 go for it. So. You know, when we think about how much money we spend in this town every two weeks and the budget and. Thinking ten thousand dollars, you know, even and then off year it would be eighty three hundred, because we. Recurrent cost is twenty eight hundred and then another fifty five for the officer who's been making dog. Um. I think it's outrageous. I think it has a lot of potential to help a lot of kids who are. Going through a lot of things that are related, you know, you know what the culture's like in the school now, it's not like it was fifteen years ago. And if it makes a difference in one child's life, it'd be pretty good. That's just my opinion and and the opinion of a therapy dog trainer.
If I could throw in just one other quick comment, just so everybody knows, this wouldn't just be a dog that goes to school and walks around. Through the S R O. Uh, what agencies that I've been hoping to do is if they have a child that needs to be interviewed, whether it's just by an officer. Or by a trained counselor, because there's some kind of trauma in their lives, what the officers would do is bring the dog in to meet with the victim. And it gives the victims, not just children, but adults, um, opportunity to kind of calm down. Generally speaking, people relax when they're cutting a dog, you know. What the two agencies that I spoke to do is, they have raised money, the agencies have raised money. People in the community have raised money, and they buy stuffed dogs that look like the dog, like in this case, Major. They have some stuffed dogs that look like Major, and they meet with the child to get interviewed, they do as they. They do is they, they explain to the child, look, Major can't come in with you. Cloud in during the. P A C interviews. Interviews. So we're gonna give you this little Major and you can keep Major with you while you go in there and they give us. So it's, it's not just everybody's using in school. There's a lot of programs by the scenes that, uh, people with trauma.
Is there any, um, research that you do on like insurance?
Yes.
Do we need to add any kind of insurance for having a dog?
We already have insurance for our other canines, so.
Who's not this?
No.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be suggesting this. So, so yes, there, there is insurance and we already, you know, that is part of the budget right now.
If, so my first question is. This. That S R O is gonna be who maintains dog, takes it home with them. Given in the past few years, the turnover rate and the, how hard it is sometimes to find officers. If we get into a situation where the turnover of the S R O is evident and we can't find a replacement, what happens with the dog?
Well.
Or if they did that?
Yeah, make no mistake, the dog would be. So the dog would stay with us and to be honest, if. They felt left and we didn't have anybody right away. We'd be making everybody in the station feel better, you know, it, it would be, it would be in the station if we found somebody out before, maybe temporarily do like York. And what the York officer does is they bring it into, they bring it to, you know. You know, a local elderly home or. Here, but just various community out, you know, we keep talking about the children, but this, this would help. Leave it. Not just kids in school, that will be our.
Sounds a lot like when Chief McLaughlin came and talked about his community E M T or paramedic that. And I'm looking at the reports and looking at how many people that person's seeing right now. These people, that's. I think it's to be commended that. This town are looking to do things to. Public safety and get a better vision to what. Public safety looks like. It's not just big, scary police officers that are gonna arrest you and pull you over. It's also individuals that are here to comfort and, and help. Uh, the people in our town and I, I think. Department go through that and now the police department also, kudos to you guys for looking at this. It's, I think it's worth it.
Uh, thank you, Commander Burr, also for your, um, interest in doing this. It was the. Uh, it had to start somewhere and we've already started fundraising, really, um, a way to jumpstart this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chief, your luck. We have six million dollars burning a hole in our pocket, so, uh, I think ten grand would be too much of an issue. Jim, what dog breed is Magnum?
Sir?
What dog breed is Magnum?
Magnum, he's a, he's an English lab.
Uh huh, that's what I thought. Alright. I am all in favor of this. In fact, I'd like to make a motion if I could. Do we have any other questions or comments? Alright, cool. I'm gonna move that we authorize the police chief to develop a comfort dog program proposal for the F Y twenty twenty-six budget with final approval dependent on the amount. Of funds the American Legion raises as well as the impact on the town budget and will be decided as part of the budget process.
Second, alright, move to second.
I didn't get two seconds, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, Marie, uh, that was first and Marie was the second. Marie, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I was gonna move to second, all bear the motion. She announced.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, twenty-four seventy-three. Consideration in any appropriate action plans to the history committee and Thompson Housing.
Uh, we interviewed, uh, two people today. We interviewed Michael Chanko for the Housing Authority. He's a thirty-year resident. He is, uh. Used to building high-performance buildings. He's a mechanical engineer. Uh, he was interested in stretching the budget and looking for affordable housing. Um, just really had a lot of, uh, good information, tax incentives and contract flexibility and so forth, so. I would like to. Do them separately or we wanna do them together, so I go ahead and talk about the other candidate. The second candidate we interviewed was Jay Hummel and he was, um, such. Uh, an high-energy guy. It was just fun to be around him. And he applied for the history committee and he, uh, his specialty is the American Revolution and he's recently purchased in Thompson. An old house. And he was so enthusiastic about joining this committee and we were just really grateful for both of these candidates. Because they really are volunteering their time and it's where benefit the community, so we were really, um. Happy to move forward. So, uh, does anyone have any comments from the interviews or are we ready to make a motion?
Can make a motion.
Okay. Um, so I would like to make a motion that we appoint Michael Chanko to the Thompson Housing Authority. And appoint Jay Hummel to the history committee.
Move to second, ready, prepare the motion? It ends.
Yeah. I had to abstain because of COVID.
Matt wasn't at the committee meeting, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did. You sound.
What's that?
You sound much better.
Yeah, I still can't hear out of my left ear though. It's kinda weird. Bizarre.
It's making me cranky.
So before.
Makes me more fiscally responsible than normal.
I understand. Thank you.
Alright. Twenty-four seventy-four. Consideration in any appropriate action to authorize the town manager to execute proposed memorandum agreement regarding streetlight electricity reimbursement. With the Riverreach condominium association.
So if you remember, um, a few weeks ago, we did one with the Oto Fundation Association that four lights, this one had one light, similar terms, same administrative fee because. It's the same network, but we just tried to do one.
We'll see you since our.
Helps use up our excess delivery.
Basically monetized.
Mark, didn't we make a change with the last one where we didn't set it at a hundred bucks, but it was like at whatever?
The actual cost and that's included in this, so the exact same language that was filed with. The actual cost of electricity, the administrative fees, the same. The administrative fee is flat.
I mean, if we've approved this already for one group, I don't see why we wouldn't approve it for. We haven't seen this happening with any other groups.
Um, we had a number of fights in the Thompson mobile home park, but they've worked with C and P to get them on their accounts, so they're off of ours. Um, there's a couple other that are in question, like this one at the end of Green Street, but it actually benefits us more than. Uh, Mr. Casada, because we still have parking in that area, so that one we're probably just gonna leave. So there probably won't be any more.
Okay. But if there were, I would assume that. Since our precedent has been set.
Okay. Motion please.
I'd like to make a motion that we. Authorize the town manager to execute the proposed memorandum of agree, memorandum of agreement. Regarding streetlight electricity reimbursement with the Riverreach condominium association. As written in the memo from Mark Walt dated eight twenty-seven twenty.
Yeah, move to second.
Thank you.
All bear the motion? It ends. Alright, let me sound something.
Motion due in here.
Sir.
We're just.
Thank you, ma'am. Get some rest.
Feel better soon.